I call this regular meeting of the Bryan City Schools Board of Education to order on Monday, December 21st, 2020. Here we are at the elementary. I would invite Kevin to call. Excuse me, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, well, Kevin, leave the roll.
Scott, here.
Ben.
Here.
Deb.
Here.
Dustin.
Here.
Mike, here. Thank you.
All board members, I should have received the minutes from the regular November meeting as well as minutes from December 14th special meeting. Were there any corrections or additions to those? Okay, I would accept a motion. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Ben.
Scott.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public participation. I'm not.
No one registering?
Aware of anyone registering for that. So we'll move on to communications. And I believe Mark has the four county report.
Yeah, thanks, though. If you have a four county report here, this comes from Sandra Keeler, our four county board liaison. So she says, "Good evening, four county is doing a lot of great things. Please be sure to check out their program spotlights on their Facebook page or at fourcounty.net. Wonderful to see what all the students are doing." She says, "First of all, we're proud of the Bryan students." She'd like to mention a few. Daisy Jack and Jacob Washington are student ambassadors, along with Scout Smith, who is the student ambassador that placed in the Fall Leadership Conference. Brianna Langendorfer and Kylie Hemingway will also be on the four county student council. And then we have Sam Doty, Sam Lauren, Craig Martin, William, and Peter, Lexi Alsquoff, and Aiden Winter. They are recognized on the Winter Sports Spirit Day. We wish them a continued successful winter sports season. Sawthorne Visitation Day had its challenges with COVID, but it did go okay. Currently, there are 288 students that have applied to go to four county Career Center for a 21 and 22 school year. The January evening open house will be virtual this year, and students can continue to apply on four county website. And they wish everyone a safe and joyous holiday season. Thank you for Mrs. Keeler.
Thank you, Mark. Moving on in communications, we would like to feature in our student spotlight tonight, Zachary Seaman. So Zach, if you would come on forward here, we appreciate it.
Good evening, Ben.
Good evening.
My name is Zach Seaman, and I'm the senior here at Bryan High School and Boy Scout 212-22. I have to present to you a Eagle Scout project that I've made for Bryan Elementary Occupational Therapy Program. My decision to create this project was thinking back on programs in El Capora when I was younger and getting back to market. I feel that the program with the biggest impact on my life was the occupational therapy program here at Bryan City Schools. When I met with Mrs. Miller, we discussed possible ideas that she would use on a regular basis. We had multiple ideas, but the one that stood out most was the sensory boards. These boards were made for the students that have positive sensory experience. Sensory processing disorders affect 5 to 16% of school age children. Children with sensory issues struggle without process stimulation, which can cause a wide range of symptoms, including hypersensitivity to sound, sight, and touch, horrifying motor skills, and easy distractability. With these boards, Mrs. Miller will be able to introduce textures and sounds to help the student assimilate to their program. With the Eagle Scout procedures, I reached out to community members and businesses to ask help upon this project. With receiving these donations, I was able to shop for the materials needed and start construction for the boards. When I was purchasing materials for boards, it brought back many memories of my sensory experiences when I was a part of this program. For example, my favorite item on all boards are the shopping cart wheels. With the help of friends and fellow Boy Scouts, the boards were constructed in a timely manner, and then contacted Mrs. Miller to present the boards in late November. My hope is that the students receiving occupational therapy services will be able to utilize these boards for years to come. It's my great honor to make these boards for Bryan City Schools. Thank you.
Any questions for Zach? I see none.
Exactly, will they have a certain user board?
They already have.
Will they have? They, like, right before next week, they have three.
So they've been in use for the past three weeks for our students, and the students absolutely love them. I was just telling Zach before we started that, every Friday, our students would come down every day to the sensory room. Every Friday, they get to have what we call Fun Friday, where they get to pick their activity.
Right.
And this is the new favorite.
Oh, that's great.
So it's, we have kids using them all day, every day. So very, it's a very much appreciated addition to our department.
Very well done.
Thank you.
They look very nice. Well, put together, I'm sure that because of how it's back to you, that you will carry forward, so great job and nice work on your project.
Thank you.
Looks like they're easy to sanitize, so between use, we're able to keep those.
We just wipe them down.
Yes, great. Good, good thinking.
Thank you.
Diana, any receipt or anything else? My board review is gave away. That's great. Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next, Mark, I believe you're going to give your last second.
Yeah, so we have reason to celebrate.
We do.
We have reason to celebrate, so, as I said, she originally tried to sit in this seat earlier. I said, "What are you doing?" So I picked her out and I shoved her over there so she could just take a repeat and relax for her final board meeting as superintendent at Bryan Schools. So we do a reason to celebrate because Diana has been a huge asset to Bryan City Schools in her roles in multiple. I'm going to go through a little bit of her bio here in a second, but if you know Diana, what makes her truly special is the ability of her to connect with people, her to connect with the needs of the community, of the district, of the students, of the staff. And she has driven and carried out initiatives that have made Bryan City Schools better. It's a better place to work, it's a better place to attend school, it's a better place to be a part of it because of her passion, her drive, and her ongoing, never-ending efforts that have made this her career so, so successful. So we are just so thankful for all that she has done and all that we know she continues to do even beyond her time here at Bryan City Schools. So I'm just going to read a brief bio here, and then I know some board members would like to say a few kind words after that as well. But for those who didn't know, Diana was a business education teacher. That's where she started her career, at SWAT schools way back in 1989. I won't share mine either. And she was there from '89 to '98. And it was in 1998 that we were lucky enough to have her here at Bryan City Schools. And she came into the district as a business education teacher, and she did that from '98 to '01. And then she moved into the assistant principal role at the high school, and she served in that role for four years. That was at the old Portland Street Building from '01 to '05. And then she moved into the central office as the curriculum coordinator, and that was from '05 until '08. And then in 2008, May of 2008 to be exact, she moved into the super presidency and has been doing that ever since until 2020. So just a few highlights of Diana. As I noted, she's had a lot of success over the years, but one that I think she could really hang her hat on, and one that we're all very proud of, and all of us, some capacity had the ability to work with her in one way, shape, or form or another, was one, helping the community see their vision for Bryan City Schools and what was next for Bryan City Schools, which led to the passage of the bond issue. And that was so important because it was able to provide Bryan City Schools and the community with a new facility that we have today. And I still refer to them as new because they are shiny and bright new, just like they were the day that we moved into them five years ago. So I refer to the six to 12 billion as the house that Diana built. I know she had a lot of help with her and a lot of support from the current board at the time and from the community members, from the students and the staff, and in that envisioning process. But they are truly, it was a truly magnificent process because not only did it meet our current needs in the community, but it helped set us to be prepared for the 21st century and beyond for years to come. So we today are so very thankful that we have everything that we have here in one campus, and we continue to grow physical landmarks into one campus, but we also are able to carry out our educational philosophies and all that we see as what being Bryan built means here on this one campus. And we can't thank Diana enough for her accomplishments and her continued efforts to help all of us in the next task. So with that, I just want to say I've had the pleasure of working with Diana hand in hand since my entry in the district eight years ago now. So I've gotten to know her very well, and she is a phenomenal person, and I wish her all the best. And I know that she still has great things to come, and don't be a stranger to be able to see her on a never-ending kind of time. But with that, I'll turn it over to our board members.
All right. Yes, I would invite all the board members to come forward. We're all working. Not sure if I want to.
All, all, all. Two sides. One to the center. One to the center. Yep. There we go.
That'll work.
Scott, that side for a quick.
There we go. All right. Diana, on behalf of the board, we just wanted to recognize you with this token for your dedicated service in the classroom with students, as well as in your leadership, in our staff, in our community, in our school district. And as Mark said, our city school is a district of excellence today because it's a community of help that you've led and implemented, and we just thank you enough. Yeah, thank you enough, and here's this token, and we greatly appreciate that. It's one of several things that might be coming along a little bit later.
Okay.
So we're going to just stay tuned for that.
Okay.
But again, we just greatly appreciate it all.
Well, thank you.
I know you were blessed to have some family members here tonight.
I'm blessed to have my family with me who has supported me this whole journey, and it has been a blessing to serve. And it really has been a service to the community and to the students, and just grateful that Bryan City Schools was able to support me in my journey, but also provide just such a well-based education for our family, so. And honest I know, ironically, Zach, I really wish that we had a bucket of ice water. Because when that full ice challenge was going on, Zach, he, he was the one that got me, and.
It's colder.
It's just, I think it's just full circle. So just an example of those connections with kids, which is what I will miss the most, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, while everyone's standing next to us, we're going to use this as an opportunity for a few photos, and we'll get one with Zach and the board as well, and then let that point forward. Whoever chooses to stay can stay, or you may choose to leave as well. All right.
Conciliation month ended November 30th, 2020. Farmers' emergency, we had $5,825,392 in 36 cents. Adjustments to the bank balance, including cash and transit, outstanding checks and miscellaneous adjustments of $385,508.85. Total investments of $11,388,377.79. Petty cash and change funds, $7,500 for total fund balance, $16,000, excuse me, $16,835,761.30. Additionally, the customary financial reports have been included. Highlight, general fund balance at the end of the month was $10,882,215.20. And the permanent improvement fund was $2,391,834.92. We'll highlight, in particular, the food service fund, which we've been keeping our eye on. You will see on that cash summary, you record a negative balance of $407.30. That does not include the reimbursement for the month of November, which was about $60,000. So we have been very pleased with how the food service fund has been working with the reimbursements, with the seamless summer option. We continue to keep our eye on it with, you know, November being a short month, December being a short month, but with the long runs of unbroken school in January and February, we feel like we're going to be in a pretty good place. We, we did advance $100,000. Whether we will be able to return all of that to the general fund remains to be seen, but certainly we are, are doing well at this point with the food service fund. Are there any questions about any of those financial reports? Hearing none. The next item I have for you is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying this to the county auditor. Normally, this is an annual action which happens in the spring. However, the Reeves County Auditor has contacted us and informed us that they have decided that they need to change the millage on the emergency levy from 6.7 mils to 6.8 mils to collect the correct amount of funds. So they have requested that this board pass this resolution, which will accomplish that. So this is an amended motion based on action that you previously took back in the spring. Next, I have amended permanent appropriations for fiscal year 21. Few changes in this month, in the general fund, we have an increase of just a little over $5,500, which is almost entirely our power school registration fee that we pay annually. In addition, in other funds, we increased $61,700, which is the final appropriations for the coronavirus relief funds for small and rural, small town and rural school districts. As we were approaching the required expenditure date, December 30th, we allocated the rest of those funds, some to the Plexiglas that we have used around the school district of the balance, to our ACE Digital Academy education program to round out that grant. And then we would like to acknowledge some donations, $3,199 for high school track uniforms for the athletic boosters, and $400 for snow caps also from the Bryan Athletic Boosters.
Okay, any questions for Kevin on those, or discussion?
So I do have a question. You talked about early on the coronavirus fund may or may not be fully utilized, so we are able to fully use the.
So one is, yeah, so we have two, two main grants related to coronavirus. The first was the CARES grant, also called ESSER, for elementary and secondary education. That grant still has about $50,000 that we have not yet allocated. If no other particular cost comes up, we will again devote it to the ACE Digital Academy program, which still has that much and more that we've spent on that. But yes, this, the second one, which was the coronavirus relief fund, we have now pulled, we're down to about $1,000 if we can cover it. We need to actually write the checks so in between now and 30th. But we have gotten that down to $1,000 we haven't spent at this point, which we just have to clean up in the next meeting or so.
Anything anticipated for this next rollout of this, any work or plans or anything that is going to have any.
No, I, you know, the, with the agreement that the United States Congress seems to have come to, that seemed to be focused primarily on businesses. In the article that I read last night, I didn't see anything that particularly talked about grants for education. Doesn't mean it's not in there, just probably, you know, it could be in there, it didn't interest a particular reporter that I was looking at. It remains to be seen, and some people think that this was just one step that they're going to take. If further steps come, then there could probably be more funding. I haven't heard calls for more funding for schools, but nothing that I'm aware of at this time.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I would move that we accept Kevin's report and recommendations. Thank you.
Ben.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott, yes. Thank you. Ben, I will remind you that we have our required organizational meeting, which must be held by January 15th. We have scheduled that. And the first regular board meeting of the 2021 calendar year for January 4th to give us time in case we have inclement weather to still meet our requirement to meet by the 15th. It's scheduled for 7:00 PM here in the Bryan Elementary Commons. The first order of action for that organizational meeting will be to appoint President Protem to conduct the meeting until you elect your board president for 2021. In addition, all board officers will be elected. We will be administering the oath of office to those officers. You will discuss establish your service fund for 2021. You will appoint your board committees. You will establish the rule for your meeting schedule for 2021, and you will consider your membership in the Ohio School Board Association. All of those are reminders. Adam President said we need a motion for those.
All right, thank you for those, Kevin. Appreciate that. All right, next item on the agenda is old business. Not seeing anything here on my notes. Moving on then to new business. First item is board committee assignments. I think we have one item there to move forward with, and that would be with Sandra Keeler continuing as our representative to the four county board of education. Was there any question or discussion? I know I, for one, appreciate Sandra's willingness to continue in that role, and I would accept a motion that we support her in continuing.
I would make that motion to have Sandra Keeler continue to be our board representative for four counties.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mike.
Deb.
Yes.
I would ask a question. I'm not sure if I suppose that.
That was the time to discuss, Deb.
No, I'm busy. I'm not a volunteer, but is that something that we should be doing in-house if we have somebody here that wanted to do that? A lot of know how that works, still new guys, so.
It is certainly your, I mean, if you wanted to do it.
No, no, I'm.
Somebody here on the board wanted to do it. The only reason we are continuing with Sandra is the fact that she was that representative for a good long while while she was on with us. And she has the knowledge and the understanding, she has the personal relationships with people out there on that board, and so we just, in the notion, she came to us and offered to continue that role, and I had a conversation with her, and I think I've had a conversation with her, we were happy, at least from my standpoint, to have that person continue to do that.
And it is an annual, I mean, it is annually looked at, so, you know, if there is another board member that's interested in assuming that role, certainly, you know, talk to Sandra about what's involved or think about it.
Yeah, I was trying to put my hand up to say I could do it. I don't have time to commit to that, but I just.
Yeah, no.
When she took it, I thought, early on, that was something that she did, because there were so many new people here, but I didn't know that was something that we should assume in-house.
And in the, I think we ought to look at this, wherever it is, it indicates that it does not have to be a board member.
It is somewhat more commonly a board member, but there is no, no requirement for it. There's letters somewhere.
Because we did ask that question last year.
Right.
She was leaving as a board member, the Bryan City School Board as a member. We did ask if it could be a community member, and if we looked into that, and it goes in fact, okay, to do that, so.
And she's willing to continue this year. Yep.
But definitely an annual review, you know, our thought to look at, you know, how we want to continue with that, so. So if you've got a lot of extra time next year, Dustin, at your.
With the guy with the kids still in school, I'm probably not the guy that has that extra time, but I do believe it's probably something we should assume back in-house.
Okay, all right, okay. Very good. Anything else with that? All right.
Deb.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda would be superintendent's recommendations. Mark?
Yeah, so first off, I have a few administrative recommendations here. First one, or the first two, I guess, are MOUs with our Bryan Education Association. The first one, in regard to the tutor rates for our school nurse. We did not have any specific language that allowed her to appropriately be compensated for extra time put in after the workday. Specifically, in this year, she has put in a great deal of, a great deal of time, I should say, with COVID, with help with contact tracing and following all of the COVID scenarios that have unfolded across our students and staff this fall, so that allows her to appropriately be compensated for those, the time spent on that after hours. And then the second MOU is a clarification within our contract on when and how members can shift on the salary schedule after and during the attainment of the master's degree. It specifically clarifies when a member can shift to the master's level column and then the master's plus 20 column. It outlines the current lunch order in which that is to take place. The last item here for my recommendations is the approval of our grade six to 12 curriculum guide. This is an annual action that we typically do in December to prepare for the next school year later on, because when we come back in January, our guidance counselor will begin to schedule classes and talk about course offerings for next school year. So it's hard to believe that we're at that point already, but we are here. So just a few highlights for you that I pulled from the curriculum guide. We are always continuing with that model of preparing our students for any type of career field in the future. A specific focus on work skills and vocational skills is always at the forefront right now. We continue to be a very college and career-focused secondary high school, but we also are integrated in as many vocational classes as possible, allowing our students the ability to prepare for the future. So with that, we're excited to announce an intro to engineering and technology course. This is going to be a course for college credit for our older students, our upperclassmen, and they will be taught by a Bryan high school teacher, but they will also earn college credit for successful completion of, completion of the course. And that will be through Northwest State Community College. So they are going to be introduced in the field of engineering to students who are interested in engineering technologies, and the goal or rationale of the course is to give them the skills necessary to eventually succeed in an engineering environment. So if they have very high interest in that course, and we hope that will go over very well, we're excited that that can be completed in-house, but for Northwest State Community College Prep. Just a few others here at the middle school level, we're continuing with the focus on staff. So we are adding a medical detectives course, which focuses on the anatomy and physiology and introductions of biology at that level, and having some fun with it through the detective work that they'll do. And then we're, we have a big focus this year on engaging with our community, which has presented some challenges with COVID, but we are always finding ways to partner with organizations, because every, every time that we do that, we see very positive outcomes from that partnership. So we are adding at the middle school level, a community service course, in one in which students focus on those fields and how to build those relationships with many great members of the community. So those are just a few of the highlights. A lot of courses continue to be offered as they have been in the past, but those are a few of the ones coming our way. Those are the administrative recommendations.
Thank you, Mark, for pulling those features out. I think, once again, it just shows how we at Bryan City Schools continue to strive for excellence and looking at new offerings for our students, so I thank you for that. All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, any other questions or discussions? I would accept a motion on administrative recommendations.
I move to, uh, accept the superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Next item would be personnel recommendations.
Ben?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, we needed...
Both.
Oh, yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, we'll move to personnel recommendations.
Yeah, so the first one we have listed, we have separate, uh, to eliminate any potential conflict of interest, so to continue on with the, uh, individual Madison Stockton on our substitute list, we're going to renew her for the remainder of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty school year. This is an action required by the Department of Education, and we're also gonna do this for all of our other substitutes as well, to do this for the remainder of the school year or to renew for the second semester if you will. So, we will first look to take action on that renewal of Madison Stockton of the substitute list.
I would move that we accept Madison Stockton, um, as a renewal for the substitute list for twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott.
Mike?
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So then moving on, we have in addition to our classified substitute list, that's Bobby Woodard, and then per the exhibits, we have, as I noted, an O D E required action to renew the approval of our certified and classified substitutes for the second half of the school year. Then we have noted a transfer of certified staff. Uh, we have recently transferred John Shell. He is going to be joining us here in this building at the elementary, teaching third grade as an intervention co-teacher, and that rule will become effective on January fourth, start of our second semester. John is coming to us internally from his part-time St. Petz intervention specialist position, so we are now in the search of filling that part-time role in which our staff member works in conjunction with St. Petz. We then also have the non-renewal of certified and classified substitutes for this school year, that's Trey Brown and Amanda Johnson. We have a parenting leave approval for the elevating, effective December seventeenth, and we have the resignation of Dave Federpi, bus driver, which will be coming to effect on January fifth.
Okay, thank you. Mark? I would accept a motion on those items.
Like motion to approve, uh, superintendent recommendations.
Thank you, Dustin? Mike, okay, agenda. Very good.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, item on the agenda would be points of information.
Yeah, so the first one noted there is legislative funding update. So if you were following, uh, the most recent push through the House, there was the fair funding proposal on this House Bill three oh five. We were hopeful that that would push its way through both the House and the Senate, uh, in a very timely manner. It did successfully pass in the House overwhelmingly, uh, however, when it got to the Senate, the Senate decided not to hear it though, um, so the bill has therefore died. Uh, we were very, very hopeful at Bryan City Schools that the fair funding proposal would continue to gain steam as it passed through both the House and the Senate, as it did forecast, uh, a, a large increase in state funding for us, um, in the next six years, uh, upwards of four billion dollars per year over the course of time. Uh, right now, Bryan City Schools, because of what's known as the cap, uh, we receive approximately eighty-five cents on a dollar in state funding, and as Mr. Schaefer would tell us during our recent COVID era, it's, uh, more equitable to about eighty cents on the dollar. So we were hoping that the fair funding proposal would, uh, push its way through, so it did not, but at this time, they are preparing for the next, um, two-year budget to go through, so we are hopeful that complements of that proposal remain in effect as they prepare the next two-year budgets, uh, that should be passed by July first of this year, so we will continually monitor that and keep our eye on that to see how the state funding formula impacts Bryan City Schools.
Okay. Appreciate that. Is there anything that we, as a board, um, could do as far as, um, you know, contacting legislators, let us know if there's a time when that's appropriate to, to do so? Um, you know, I think we all recognize that, um, what is it, seventeen years now that Ohio has said that we don't have a fair system. It's a long time to not be seeing some movement towards some solutions, so appreciate, I know I would appreciate you letting, letting us know if there's things that we, as a board, can do at all, so, but thank you for that update.
And then, next up, just our upcoming meetings, so as Kevin noted, we have our January organizational and regular meeting scheduled for January fourth of the new year, that's seven o'clock right back here in the elevator cabins, and then our next business advisory committee meeting is scheduled for February seventeenth, at seven o'clock A M. on our meeting hours.
Good, very good, thank you, Mark. Um, we do have a need to go into executive session this evening. Um, I do not anticipate any actions as we come out of that session this evening, so I would accept a motion.
And the purpose of the executive session is...
I'm sorry, yes, is to discuss employment, um, compensation for employee. Okay. All right, accept a motion to... Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.